...obtain, request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reorder at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you. Pursuant to Section 8414-11 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Services Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, October 7th at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 8414-12 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Vice President Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS Division Emission Statement.
First Division, every student, every day, prepare for success. In our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Crackey.
Bowman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Ate present.
Thank you. Moving on to School Spotlight with Kayla Morsy.
Sorry, I apologize.
No problem, President Snow. I appreciate the chance to be up here for the first time tonight. Jeremy Mascol with District Communications. Good evening, President Snow, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. We are very pleased to welcome Gifford Park Student Nora Wessel, Teacher Nicole Aunie, and Principal Kim Jones as tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight. With strong community support, engagement, enthusiasm, families gathered to officially dedicate Gifford Park Elementary School this past week. The energy was contagious, and the gratitude to our voters who made the project possible through our bond was palpable. All of our speakers truly did a wonderful job sharing their perspective on the unique privilege of being a foundational member of a school community. But I want to highlight specifically Ms. Aunie and Nora's speeches. They were heartfelt, they hit home, they show the best of what makes us all OPS proud. I would now like to turn the microphone over to our student speaker Nora Wessel to deliver an excerpt of her incredible speech.
Good evening. My name is Nora Wessel, and I'm a fifth grader here, I'm a fifth grader at Gifford Park Elementary. I love to read, so the library is my favorite spot. It is a very inviting place. I like that our school is two stories and that there is lots of space for all our activities like ESL, band, gait, strings, et cetera, and that new school smell is amazing. It's nice to be so much closer to my school. I'm able to walk or ride my bike, and that's nice. Plus, lots of friends who live in the neighborhood go there, too. I have four younger brothers. Two go to Gifford Park Elementary, and the other two will follow soon. As the oldest child in my family, I have to be a good leader at home and at school. When I was chosen to help pick the name, mascot, and colors for Gifford Park Elementary, I was proud. Proud to be chosen and proud to have a say in the decision. Our mascot, the Gifford Park Groundhogs, is great. Number one, the alliteration, and number two, there are groundhogs all around the neighborhood. I even saw one in my backyard this summer. The name Gifford Park Elementary is just perfect. We're in Gifford Park neighborhood, one of the best neighborhoods in the city. My neighborhood is amazing because the people there are so friendly and care about each other. There are so many community projects and ways for us to get to know each other. Gifford Park Elementary is like that, too. The teachers and staff are funny, kind, and I know we're in good hands. It is the beginning of a great neighborhood school. Thank you.
My mic, sorry. Would we like to have the principal? We also have a teacher here as well from Gifford Park. You guys approach the podium. Thank you guys so much for being here. I mean, could you please introduce yourself for everybody that's here watching?
I am Nora Wessel, student at Gifford Park Elementary.
Thank you so much, Nora.
I'm Nicole Aunie, first grade teacher at Gifford Park.
Perfect.
Kim Jones, proud principal of Gifford Park.
Awesome. Well, thank you guys so much for being present today and also at the kickoff and the grand opening of the elementary school. Could you just explain to the board of probably your most exciting thing, being in a brand-new school and having that, being the first people of Gifford Park Elementary to kind of break ground and set the new tradition at the school?
Put it over to you first. Well, for me, and I mentioned this at the dedication, the really important part for me was to be a part of building a culture of a school. Usually, you don't get to do that as a teacher. You would move to a new school, and then you just assimilate into a culture, but being a part of building one is extra special, so that's the best part, I think.
It's great to have, like, a bunch of kids from the neighborhood be able to walk to school or bike to school, and to have us all together at one neighborhood school is just really nice.
That's awesome.
And I would just ditto what Nicole said about building the culture and getting the neighborhood all on the same page. Everybody is so involved. It's just truly the best experience I've ever had.
Thank you, guys. Colleagues on the board, do you guys have any questions or comments? Ms. Snipe.
Hello, Nora. Is this working? Hello? Hi, Nora. First of all, you are an amazing speaker, and I'm so proud that your little brothers have you to look up to. I'm biased, I'm very familiar with Gifford Park, and I would piggyback what you said and agree that it is one of the best neighborhood associations around. I really love hearing about the interaction between the neighborhood and the schools. That is music to my ears. Very, very proud. You've done a wonderful job, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Gadding.
Well, I want to just say congratulations to getting it opened and operating, and good luck to Mrs. Jones because she moved from my neighborhood to a few different places and is now at Gifford Park. So you're all in good hands, and I'm excited for all of you.
Perfect. Any other colleagues? All right, well, this is the best part of the day. We get to shake your hand and congratulate you for being our school spotlight, Nora, and we would love to shake everyone's hand and take a group photo here so it can be on the district website as well as sending out to people in the community. So, thank you guys so much. Can we all give them a round of applause? And if you guys are curious, you can walk across the street and take a look at the new elementary school. The board meeting will be over about 6:30, I bet.
Yeah. And Mom.
What? Come on! They're like, "What?"
Okay, you guys ready? One, two, three. Okay, we'll take one more. One, two, three.
All right, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, everyone who's here today for our early meeting. I have several updates today. The first one is last week, we held our first of two Futures Lab sessions at the Learning Community, the 24th and Lake Street. Input from the Futures Lab will be used to inform the development of our strategic plan of action, also called strategic foresight. Each of the two sessions included about 40 staff members. I'd like to thank the board members who were able to attend. The Futures Lab, Mrs. Gadding, Mr. Snow, Dr. Holman, and Ms. Snipe were able to attend the Futures Lab, all are part of the Futures Lab, so we certainly appreciate your participation, your active participation. And the second Futures Lab will be on October the 8th. All share their thoughts and insights about the concerns they feel are most important to our school district to be prepared as we educate our students over the next 20 years. Although the strategic foresight will be for the next five years, we know that we need to be thinking and looking about 20 years out. We'd like to thank Rebecca Ryan, who is an economist, also a futurist, who held both Future Lab sessions and will be back in October. She will be doing a board report on October 7th. This is Omaha Education Week, hashtag #We'reOPSProudWeek, a friendly reminder to our families that this week is Omaha Education Week, and we hold open houses across the district. In fact, the first elementary open houses will start in approximately 47 minutes. Hopefully, families will get out to their elementary schools to visit in the open house for the recognition of Omaha Education Week. We're incredibly proud of our progress that Omaha Public Schools has made over the past 160 years and very optimistic about our future. About 10 days ago, or 12 days ago, we had the dedication for the 60th and L, I'm sorry, our groundbreaking ceremony for 60th and L, and then just last week, we had our dedication for Gifford Park. The new school at 60th and L, which we will have a presentation on in a little while, is designed as a 285,000-square-foot, 1,500-student-capacity high school set to open in the 2022-2023 school year. Tomorrow, we have the groundbreaking for the 156th and Ida School that will also include a partnership with the YMCA, and we will also have an opportunity to look at that school in a little while. We'd like to thank our partners at Jacobs for making this available to us this evening so the board can get a 3D, and the public can get a 3D look at the school. It is really, really, very, very cool. Parent Math Nights are backed by popular demand for parents of kindergarteners through sixth-grade students. Last year, we held these quarterly Parent Math Night sessions at four schools. Parents have shared with us that they find the sessions valuable for helping equip them to better support their students, and so these continue. The first session is Thursday, September 12th. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we had the last first session, I apologize, which was last Thursday, September 12th, at Skinner Magnet School. And thank you to those that attended. The next one will be November 14th at Ashland Park Robbins Elementary School. Today, actually yesterday, at 10:00 AM was the 50th birthday and anniversary of KIOS, Omaha's only NPR station, the NPR station, and that's National Public Radio Station, housed right here in the Teacher Administrative Center. The station started at Omaha Central High School in September of 1969 and was the, has been an educational extension of the Omaha Public Schools since that time. It became a charter member of NPR in 1971. It is one of the few radio stations programmed on the dial in my car, actually it's the only one, which shows how exciting a life that I lead. I love NPR, love everything about NPR, learn so much about it. Sometimes people ask me how I know about things, and it's because I learned it there. And it's, staff members and our Board of Education are invited to attend a noon education forum at the Omaha Press Club this Thursday, September 19th, where KIOS station manager Ken Duzick will talk about the station's history. And so if you'd like more information, please let us know. And I know I plan to attend that on Thursday as an enthusiast of National Public Radio. Parents, please note that there will be no school for students this Friday, September 20th. Our teachers will engage in a curriculum training day, and that on Monday, the 23rd, elementary school students will not have school as it is a teacher planning day. Kudos to the Omaha Public Schools seniors who earned recognition as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Semifinalists represent less than 1% of high school seniors across the country. From Omaha North Magnet School, it was Sage Care. From Omaha Central High School, honorees included Sedona Chalua, Carly Flynn, and Eric Sager, Para. So congratulations to those four students. The semifinalist also honor also signifies that these students will compete for more than $30 million in post-secondary scholarships. To reach this spot in the competition, students have demonstrated high levels of academic achievement, community involvement, and leadership. We're very proud of those four. I'm actually going to go out and visit with them later this week to congratulate them in person. In front of the Board of Education, you have a timeline that you can see. I wanted to give the board an update on Here Comes the Bus timeline for the 2019-2020 school year. It took us about a month to make sure that we could, SDA was granted access to OPS, to our database, so that we can begin the implementation very broadly of Here Comes the Bus. We were able to listen to the board's concerns to make sure they could get started by winter, and so you will see that the first week in December is the finalizing of launch. And so, and we are doing a comparative analysis this week, and Session 3, we're having registration and sign-in process. The first two weeks of October, we have an internal pilot test run, pre-selected students from each high school, communication letter to parents. The third week in October, we'll get feedback, and then, as you can see, it moves on to middle schools the first week in November, and then to our elementary school students, which you will be able to see, I think on the back, you'll be able to see that the elementary students, because of the way this printed, it goes a little bit onto the next sheet. But the second and third week of January, the internal pilot test for pre-selected students from each elementary, and then we will finalize the launch in January for elementary students. So you can see where the progression is. I know that we had talked about it being even further down the road, but we're really trying to get it moving for, so that we'll have the bulk of the winter season that students will have access to it. And those conclude my remarks. I will be giving another update at the end of October for the Board of Education, and then one at the end of November, so we'll be able to, and the public. Mr. Mascol, our Executive Director for Communications as well, will be putting out information for parents as this moves along. But we are mostly working with our school-based leadership to make sure that they are on the, because they will be working on the front lines with our students, to make sure that this gets implemented and implemented well. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Board members, any comments? Ms. Crackey.
I've been out visiting other schools in addition to my own, so I've moved on to others. And one of the things I'm picking up there that is really, really impressive, by their check-in, check-out list, they have attendance matters, every minute counts. Not all of them do, some of them put it in their newsletter, but when it's on the check-in sheet, it's impressive. You look at that, and you realize, oh, I'm checking them out again, and how many minutes is this? So it says, minutes late per day or early out per day, learning time lost in a year. Five minutes is 2.12 days. 10 minutes is 4.24 days. 15 minutes, 6.37 days. 20 minutes, 8.49 days. 30 minutes, 12.74 days. And 60 minutes, 25.48 days. It says, help your son and daughter have the best chance of success. Attend daily on time all day. And you know, as a classroom teacher, that was certainly significant because we were already underway. If you did math the first thing, because they're fresh, they love to do math, and I did it the first thing, and then they came in, and half the lesson maybe was over with at some point. And so I want to encourage parents to please try and get there on time and realize the, what the implication is for your child when they're late. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues, a word? Okay. I feel like my mic keeps going in and out. Might be me. Just a quick update for everybody. October 4th, North High School, I believe the only high school in the metro, will be having their homecoming parade at Miller Park, so all the elementary schools in the area, the kids come out and watch. The football team and the entire high school walk down Miller Park and celebrate their tradition they've been doing for a long time. Also, just an update to let people know, the District Citizens Advisory Committee will be October 8th at 6:30 PM and here in the TAC Building in the boardroom. So if you're interested in attending that, please put that on your calendar. And that's all my notes there. We do not have any public comments, so moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
Second.
This motion, offered by Dr. Holman, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? See you none. Roll call, please. Bowman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Naina. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our information item, J2A, 2018 Bond Program New High School, 60th and L.
President Snow, Vice President Holman, board members, Dr. Logan, thanks again for having us this evening. Got some, have some representatives from DLR Group as well as BCDM. DLR Group is currently leading the design effort on the 60th and L Street High School project, and BCDM is leading the effort on the 156th and Ida Street. What we have this evening is, the design firms are going to provide just a brief overview, really brief, on the site, just to kind of orientate, and then they'll go into a virtual reality or a 3D modeling fly-through of each project. So it'll be kind of quiet during the model, we want to make sure everyone can take a good look, and then if you have any questions at the end, of course, we can answer those.
Aaron?
Good evening. My name's Aaron Pearson, I'm the principal at DLR Group.
Tony, DLR Group.
As Mark said, we're going to take just a brief moment to orient everyone to the site. The site is on 60th and L Street. I'm going along 60th Street here and L Street at the bottom of the page. North is up. We've got approximately 40 and a half acres. The site is divided largely into two parts, with the west half of the site serving, or being filled with our athletic fields, and the east half of the site with our building and parking. The site is accessed from both 60th Street and from L Street, and we have a road that comes up to the front of the building and around the site connecting L Street with 60th Street. There are three entrances to the building, on the south, on the east, where we anticipate the bus drop-off to be, and on the north. And parking is conveniently located on three sides of the building adjacent to each of the main entrances. And now for the exciting part, 3D walkthrough of the new 60th and L High School. We're entering the building right here, and you can see just in the distance, there's a courtyard beyond. Once the school day has begun, students will enter through the main office. To your right is the Commons. Keep in mind that we've got colors in here, but final finishes haven't been selected yet, so the colors could be similar or could be very different. Commons opens up to the courtyard on the right side of the screen. Great place for outdoor classes and lunches on nice days.
We've talked previously a lot about the slope of the site. One of the ways that we accommodate that is making a grade transition within the building, which also allows a top-loading gym. So from the entry check-in, check-out list, they have attendance matters, every minute counts. Not all of them do, some of them put it in their newsletter, but when it's on the check-in sheet, it's impressive. You look at that and you realize, oh, I'm checking them out again, and how many minutes is this? So it says, minutes late per day or early out per day, learning time lost in a year. Five minutes is 2.12 days. Ten minutes is 4.24 days. Fifteen minutes, 6.37 days. Twenty minutes, 8.49 days. Thirty minutes, 12.74 days. And sixty minutes, 25.48 days. It says, help your son and daughter have the best chance of success, attend daily on time all day. And you know, as a classroom teacher, that was certainly significant, because we were already underway. If you did math the first thing, because they're fresh, they love to do math, and I did it the first thing, and then they came in, and half the lesson maybe was over with at some point. And so I want to encourage parents to please try and get there on time and realize the, what the implication is for your child when they're late. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or word?
I feel like my mic keeps going in and out. Might be me. Just a quick update for everybody. October 4th, North High School, I believe the only high school in the metro, will be having their homecoming parade at Miller Park, so all the elementary schools in the area, the kids come out and watch. The football team and the entire high school walk down Miller Park and celebrate their tradition they've been doing for a long time. Also, just an update to let people know, the District Citizens Advisory Committee will be October 8th at 6:30 PM, and here in the TAC building in the boardroom. So if you're interested in attending that, please put that on your calendar. And that's all my notes there. We do not have any public comments, so moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is here before us.
Second. There's motion on the floor by Dr. Holman, second by Mr. Smith. Any abstentions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Holman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Naina. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our information item, J2A, 2018 Bond Program New High School, 60th and L.
President Snow, Vice President Holman, board members, Dr. Logan, thanks again for having us this evening. Got some, have some representatives from DLR Group as well as BCDM. DLR Group is currently leading the design effort on the 60th and L Street High School project, and BCDM is leading the effort on the 156 and Ida Street. What we have this evening is, the design firms are going to provide just a brief overview, really brief, on the site, just to kind of orientate, and then they'll go into a virtual reality or a 3D modeling fly-through of each project. So it'll be kind of quiet during the model, we want to make sure everyone can take a good look, and then if you have any questions at the end, of course, we can answer those.
Aaron.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Pearson, I'm the principal at DLR Group.
Tell pity, DLR Group.
As Mark said, we're going to take just a brief moment to orient everyone to the site. The site is on 60th and L Street. I'm going along 60th Street here, and L Street at the bottom of the page. North is up. We've got approximately forty and a half acres. The site is divided largely into two parts, with the west half of the site serving, or being filled with our athletic fields, and the east half of the site with our building and parking. The site is accessed from both 60th Street and from L Street, and we have a road that comes up to the front of the building and around the site connecting L Street with 60th Street. There are three entrances to the building, on the south, on the east, where we anticipate the bus drop-off to be, and on the north. And parking is conveniently located on three sides of the building, adjacent to each of the main entrances. And now for the exciting part, 3D walkthrough of the new 60th and L High School. We're entering the building right here, and you can see just in the distance, there's a courtyard beyond. Once the school day has begun, students will enter through the main office. To your right is the commons. Keep in mind that we've got colors in here, but final finishes haven't been selected yet, so the colors could be similar or could be very different. Commons opens up to the courtyard on the right side of the screen. Great place for outdoor classes and lunches on nice days.
We've talked previously a lot about the slope of the site. One of the ways that we accommodate that is making a grade transition within the building, which also allows a top-loading gym. So from the entry level, from either of the three entries that Aaron pointed out in the building, when you're coming to a spectator event at the gym, you will enter at the upper bleacher level. Another thing we talked a lot about was the importance of collaboration in learning, and a concept that learning can occur everywhere. So the corridor areas in the classroom wing are very open. There are collaboration spaces within those corridors with a lot of visibility to the classrooms. The intent of this is to enhance collaboration, enhance activity-based learning for teacher-student collaboration, student-student collaboration, and faculty-faculty collaboration. So it'll be a very, very flexible space.
Turn this over to my colleague, Mr. Smith.
Hey, thank you, Aaron. I'm Bob Mayberry with BCDM, and will present the 156th and Ida project. This is our site plan. North is, to the top as well. Actually, I think I'm just going to use the arrow. So north is up, on the right side or east side is 156th Street. On the south or bottom is Ida Street. So you can see, we have an arc road that connects 156 and Ida, and that's the main entry to the high school, is, sort of fronts on that arc road. We share one entry area for everybody. The parking area in the center is for the staff and YMCA, staff and patrons, and then the parking lot on the, sort of northeast is a student lot, and the parking lot on the southwest is a student lot. We also have the bus drop-off area here, so it doesn't matter how you're coming, everybody sort of comes to the main entry area. When we show the walkthrough, you'll see that there's one entry area, but there is a distinctly different entry for the YMCA than there is for the high school. As we've worked with Phil Santori, the security consultant, that was a recommendation that they had. We also have a loop road that goes around the school to provide fire truck access, but also access to the service area, and then also limited parking for the softball, baseball field. And then this, the north end of the property is geared towards the high school, outdoor PE and athletic activities. And on the other side of the arc road is some open play area that would be used primarily for the YMCA playfields, but also would be utilized for variety functions for the high school as well. This is approaching the main entrance. The entrance to the Y is on the right side, the two doors to the right. We're actually coming in to the doors of the high school through the security vestibule into the main office, which has a good view of the security vestibule as well as the entry lobby. Now we're going back out into the entry lobby, you can sort of see a vision into the auxiliary gym, and this entry lobby also serves as a pre-function space for the theater. And then this is the main cafeteria and commons, which I think provides a pleasant dining experience for the students. And you can see up, and then there's a learning stair that goes up to the media center. So it's a lot like one of the high schools that we toured in Kansas City, for those of you that went. I think both projects share a lot of, mostly the same goals, and collaboration is certainly an important one, where there's large open areas, but also areas where you can have some acoustic privacy. And the classrooms are, have a nice balance of visibility, so that way teachers can still observe what's going on in the collaboration columns at commons, but also still provide safe areas of refuge for safety and security. So again, it creates a, really a wonderful collaborative environment where students can really achieve their best.
Well, that was something very different, so, very impressive.
So again, this evening was, the intent was to provide a glimpse of a more scalable, sometimes on plan, it's hard to really see, so, you know, everything in those images are scaled to people's sizes, et cetera. Gives a glimpse of kind of the exterior facade as you move into the building, then of course, throughout. As Aaron had mentioned, the team is still working through actual material selection, but the goal is to emulate everything that you folks see here this evening. So if there's any questions, we'll get the team up here to make sure we can answer them to the best of our ability.
Perfect. I'll open up to members of the board, if you guys have any questions or comments about the renderings and the presentation we just received. Mrs. Gotti.
I just want to thank you for giving us a sneak peek at what we'll get to walk into. I really appreciate that. This has been a unique experience to see, and I'm seeing a little bit of flashback from what I remember in Kansas City, so I really appreciate the effort that all of you have put into this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to thank you guys so much for putting us together, short notice for us. It really is awesome to be able to see the work come to life, that, the tour that we took to Kansas, to see those open concepts with the cafeteria and those common spaces for the students, and also that top-loading gym that's going to be at the 60th and L High School. And I believe both sites, if I'm correct, when you're driving to them, they would kind of sit on a, kind of a hill, you'd be able to see.
Correct. From an elevation perspective, as you approach, you'll be looking up at both campuses.
Perfect. Well, thank you guys so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. So because we have open house, I will, Dr. Holman. Yes, ma'am.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, real estate, negotiations, and legal advice.
There's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Ooh, second by Mrs. Crackey. Mr. Roll call, please. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Naina. Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, real estate, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect, the board will be in the closed session at 5:35.
(inaudible)
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 (inaudible)